Call this meeting to order of the Minnehaw County Planning Commission and we'll take a few introductory comments, of course, as you have already, please make sure your cellphones are turned off. Any final action taken on conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed by the Planning Office by Monday, October 3rd at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing Tuesday, October 18th at or after 9:00 AM. Meetings of the County Commission are held in this same room. This time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. The minutes from the August 22nd meeting are included in the consent agenda. Are there any objections from the Planning Commission members on the consent, any items on the consent agenda? Okay, I'll read each item, and should anyone want to move it to the regular agenda, please raise your hand. Item number two is, item number one is approval of the minutes from August 22nd. Item number two is a conditional use permit, 1662, to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building requesting 1,350. This is petitioner Stuart Evans. The owner is H&amp;B Builders. It's 49-493 Silver Creek Circle, approximately four miles north of Sioux Falls.
Chair, that one got withdrawn by the applicant.
That is withdrawn. Okay, item number three, conditional use permit, 1664, to allow an agriculture-related operation, seed warehouse and distribution on the property. Petitioner is Adam Wolf. Property owner is David Rave. Location, southwest corner of 248th Street and 478th Avenue, approximately three miles southeast of Del Rapids. Okay, item number four, conditional use permit, 1665, to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building requesting 3,888 square feet. Let's see, Thomas Okinga is the way I would say that, located at 26541 461st Avenue, approximately five miles southwest of Humboldt.
Hartford.
South of Hartford. South of Hartford, excuse me, yeah, south of Hartford. That's actually pretty close to me. Item five, conditional use permit, 1666, to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building. Petitioner Dean Sormum. This is located at 47-510 258th Street, approximately three miles north of Sioux Falls. Item number six, conditional use permit, number 1668, to exceed 1,200 square feet of building area requesting 3,100. Petitioner is Ryan Anderson. It's at 48-481-222-259th Street, approximately one mile north of Brandon. Item number seven, conditional use permit, 1669, to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building requesting 2,580. This is from Donna Maminga. Location is 46067 259th Street, approximately three miles west of Hartford. Okay, that concludes the items on the consent agenda. I did not see any objections from any audience members, so we will move for action.
Motion for approval.
Second. A motion for approval and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, the consent agenda is complete. Now, if you have a sign out there that you paid $50 to have temporarily, please turn that sign in, the county needs those back. That's why they charge you $50. They're in demand all the time, so please bring your sign back and get your 50 bucks back, and we will continue with our regular meeting. You are free to grow if your consent agenda item has been approved, and we have two items left to cover.
Okay, item number eight is conditional use permit, 1649. This was to allow a water tower structure for the city of Brandon. The property was located at the corner, northwest corner of Redwood Boulevard and Chestnut Avenue, northeast of Brandon. The applicant called me today and asked to have this continued for a period of time. They will come up here, they haven't decided yet whether it'll be one month or two months, but there are some pending negotiations going on for potentially a different site. I'll let those, let them address that. They have had, if you look through your packet of information, they had several meetings with neighbors, they provided some more detailed information, so they have made a, certainly they reached out to all the neighbors there to sort of discuss what was going to be occurring. So I will turn it over to representatives from the city of Brandon, and they can tell you how long they are going to request a continuation for.
All right, thank you Scott. Yes, please come forward, state your name, please.
Brian Reed with City of Brandon. Requesting 30 days. We haven't had an opportunity to review additional sites with the city council yet. We plan on doing that Monday night, so we should have something back within the next 30 days.
So it'd actually be less than 30 days, the October 24th is the meeting.
Okay, so we then extend.
Can't we make it November 10th? I'm just busy.
Yeah.
I'm kidding.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
I think we can accommodate that quite easily.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll need a motion to continue.
Mr. Chair, would there be any objection by anybody?
Any objection by any of the members in the audience? If not, we will move forward.
I move to defer any action until October 24th.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion of second to delay until October 24th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, item number nine, conditional use permit to allow farm equipment and vehicle sales by Austin Digbig on Cottonwood Avenue, which is the Renner exit area, right? Looks like he's a Lone Ranger in the audience, okay.
Good evening, Commission. David Heino, Planning Department. Item number nine is conditional use permit, 16-67, is to allow the, is a conditional use permit for the sales of ag products, which primarily consisting of late-model farm tractors and other accompanying implements. Skip forward right here, the location is in the Crooks-Renner exit industrial park, so continue on about a quarter mile down the road, and in a newer addition that some of the buildings that are going up are things like warehousing and recently approved conditional use permits for things like trucking businesses, construction, there's auto body shop. So you have mix of storage units and other uses in the vicinity existing. This is, there was a conditional use permit, which I'll get to in a minute, on this property for a contractor shop and storage yard, which now the request is for, to allow sales on the property, so a little bit of a shift in use from what was occurring on the site currently, but still maintaining what is currently there. Skipping forward to the site plan, a little bit hard to see on this map, so I'll kind of just walk through this in a little bit of detail and going through. There's an existing driveway off of Cottonwood, which is now, there's concrete apron up to the property line, right here, which that stops there, and then the rest of the area, which has been, over time, has been applied with the hot mix asphalt material, but it's beginning to break down over time. The concrete apron was installed about a little less than a year, so it hasn't been in that long. Just recently, there was another approach that was added off of Dominic Street, which is on the north side of the property, and this extends into cul-de-sac just to the west, about a little less than a quarter mile, or about another 100 feet down this direction. And, so this one was just added, there's a garage door on the north side of the building, as I'll show some of the pictures. This is not currently hard surface, which Dominic Street is hard surface, so this is the one of the things that staff wants to highlight, is that the, all the access points, any and all access points need to be hard surfaced to get to, and this would be one of the areas that would need to be hard surfaced all the way to the garage door itself. There's other areas that, right up next to the building, there's an existing concrete pad located just to the east of this building. As you can see, I'll move forward. So this is the concrete apron that I was talking about, and then progressing forward, this is the area that has begun to break down over time, it's more of a gravel driving surface, which is pulling out gravel onto the Cottonwood Avenue, right here in the foreground. And this is the building, has two garage door bays to accommodate, as the petitioner has noted in the narrative, for machinery or tractors and equipment to be stored inside the building, and in addition, there's an office just off this part of the building right here. You can see in the background, there's a storage yard with, that has a fence all the way around it, which does have a screen on both the south and the north side. There's no screen on the west side, but there's no, there's no development on this, the south side of Dominic Street, all the development is occurring on the north side, so most of that is still vacant industrial zone property, and then you have the agricultural property, which is located to the southwest of, as you can see in the green area right here with the farm field. Progressing forward, here is the shot off of Dominic Street, so you're looking right at another garage door, same height door, and the office space right here with the two windows there. This is one of the access points, gates to, there's two access points, gates to the outdoor storage area right here. As you can see, there is, there's a 90% opacity screen, screening material on the fence for outdoor storage. The petitioner's plan for outdoor storage is to have an area for RVs and boats for mostly temporary and seasonal equipment that is in this area, so most of the stuff that is currently there is trailers and the contractors' equipment, and there's a few other buses that are located within that. This is the west side of the storage yards, the fence that does not have screening around it, and then in the background, you see the agricultural field and the vacant land right here, mostly just basically trucks for the existing business that's already there. This fence was just recently installed, also just a little less than a year, so this hasn't always been there, but the fences on this side, on the Dominic, Dominic Street and on the other side in the background there along the field. And this is a diagram that staff put together based on the hard surfacing, we've been working on, working with property owners that are located mainly, kind of see a green line here, just north of everything in the green, what's known as the Green Valley addition, it's known on the plat, all the businesses on hard surfacing, on the hard surfacing requirement and meeting that. This area right here is, as noted by the zoning ordinance, there's a 15-foot buffer strip that you have between the property, property line and any driving and parking areas, so know whether it's, whether there's any outdoor storage, as is mentioned to me, the petitioner has brought forward and can clarify more on that, is having any like tractors or equipment or trailers that are stored outside would not be permitted to be allowed in this 15-foot area, which is denoted on this. So the, mainly the yellow area is the area that would need to be hard surface, this is up to where that gate is to get to the outdoor storage area, and then the rest of the area, I've already mentioned that the area in front of the building, there's already a concrete pad there for the building itself, and then in addition to that, you have this area right here. What the zoning ordinance states is that any areas that are adjacent to the front yard setbacks, that are parking and driving areas must be hard surface, which with this lot, it's a corner lot, so everything is adjacent to that front yard setback, hence the requirement for the hard surfacing. And this is the petitioner's plan for what the hard surfacing is. I've been up to the property, I haven't been out there recently, but about a month ago, the hard surfacing was not installed. So this is the petitioner's plan right here on the right, as noted with the driveway, so kind of mirrors what the one, the diagram on the left shows. There's a sidewalk that would wrap around the building, around that office space, that little square building right there, and then the driveways leading up to Cottonwood and Dominic Street. So a couple of the things, I just want to go through the criteria that we go through in determining the effect upon the use and enjoyment and property values in the vicinity. This is an existing industrial park, there's other similar uses that range in scale from storage units to transportation terminals and other auto, or auto sales in display. The effect upon normal and orderly growth, the light industrial district already allows for light industrial, which includes things like retail, office, warehousing, personal services. The remaining vacant land, which is, as I mentioned, agricultural and vacant industrial, industrial zone land. Historically, this area has seen significant commercial, mainly commercial and industrial growth with residential growth, more commonly seen with the city of Crooks, which is just about over a mile and a half to the west, or to the northwest, excuse me, and then you've got Renner across the interstate, which is another populated area with mostly residential and then commercial growth, and then as well as the primary economic center with the city of Sioux Falls and other future development potential. Utilities, roads, drainage and other necessary facilities are, as are provided. Access exists to the property, but all driving and parking areas, staff stressed it must be hard surface and is, would be included in the conditions of approval if approved. Dominic, Dominic Street access is not currently hard surfaced. Off-street parking and loading, parking areas should be able to accommodate five to six spaces, as is seen in front of the building, on the east side where the garage doors are, as well as additional parking that is located just to the north side, but not located within the 15-foot setback from the, both property lines. And as well as additional opportunity for trucks or other delivery vehicles or clients or customers to maneuver in and out of the driveways. Odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration and lighting are, measures are put in place to be controlled. Petitioner has stated that no heavy mechanical work or teardown of equipment will be on-site. Has, the narrative mentions that this is sent off to other subcontractors for, or the associated work. General dust, noise, vibration concerns can be a particular concern, especially with pickup of materials. Also, in the narrative states that the, most of the sales would be done online, so it is, it's, the assumption is that most of the people would be coming to the site to pick up vehicles, trailers or farm machinery and other things. Lighting is directed downward onto the property and out there, the building mostly, the building's already in place, so that's, making sure that that's carried forward into the future with any future lighting. Health, safety, general welfare in the comprehensive plan. Storage and warehousing, retail sales already exist in the area. There's no significant effect on surrounding property values with the addition, because there's already the building there, this is requesting approval for the proposed use for retail sales, so changing use from a contractor shop to retail sales, or auto sales in display. It's located within the transition area in the envisioned 2035 comprehensive plan, which encompasses most of the, most of the area of the city of Sioux Falls, primary economic center, as well as the city of Crooks, which sets forth maintaining eventual commercial, or maintaining that until eventual commercial and residential growth occurs, which is not to affect any future growth in the area. So staff recommends approval with eight conditions, which there's a change in one of the conditions, which is number three, that, that no unlicensed or inoperable vehicles, parts, machinery, et cetera, shall be allowed outside of the fenced area. Basically, to control, as petitioner has pointed out to staff in the recent weeks, that they would like to have display of tractors and other trailers and equipment, so ensuring that nothing is placed with, outside of the fenced-in area, which, you look in number two, that includes the 90% opacity requirement for the fence. As development occurs to the west and those lots are developed, that will be required to have a screening material placed on it, on that west side of the fence, but as of right now, it's vacant land and vacant industrial zone land and agricultural to the south, so that isn't, isn't a primarily an issue. So staff recommends approval of the farm equipment and vehicle sales and repair and outdoor storage. Recommends approval of conditional use permit, 16-67, with the eight conditions.
All right, thank you. Any questions, staff? Seeing none, the petitioner, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have any additional comments?
Duane Music, 2200 West 37th Street, Sioux Falls. I, thank you, David. I agree with the number three, but I would like to make sure that we understand each other, I would like to have positive display tractors outside the fence area, but not obviously in the easement in front, but there's plenty of parking area outside of the hard surface area, that if we can't get eight or 10 tractors in the big building, we would like the opportunity to display them along the outside. So, and I think he answered, I'm not positive, but I think he kind of asked for that variance. And also, on the hard surfacing, I was provided that diagram to the right there by the owner, and he promised to do this to get me to sign the lease. I haven't signed the lease yet because I'm waiting to see what happens here tonight, but he has put the driveway in, they haven't been out there recently, obviously, but the front driveway is in, the pad is in in the front, they just haven't installed the driveway, or the sidewalk around the office, and then the one going to the side street, but he assures me it's going to be done hopefully this week, they're going to try and get it finished. But I wanted to make sure that isn't my diagram, I didn't do that diagram, but.
So would that take a change for us to allow tractors? I mean, it's appropriate in that part of the world.
It's not uncommon to see that you already have, you have trailer sales with the trucks, trucks and trailers, and then just in the south, you've got, essentially the same thing, tractors and trailers and.
Yes, so we have to change the way that's worded?
That's just including that you don't have any, basically broken down.
Inoperable.
That's where you change it.
Right.
Things that are not already working, whether it has to be licensed, that's included.
Okay, so then they could park that already.
Basically, you're sure that you don't have unlicensed cars out there or trailers.
Broken down.
Yeah, so that was the point you guys were making in that change to that condition.
Also, on the, on number six, I believe it is, they're recommending that all hard services must be completed by August 31st, 2017. My concern is that, I want the concrete in there as soon as possible, and I'm afraid that if I go to the landowner and say, well, I don't have to do this 2017, he might drag his feet and not do these driveways, and I really don't want to.
August, it's 2016?
Seventeen. Gives him another year to finish, I'd say sixteen, I meant seventeen.
Certainly change it to the sixteenth.
Yeah.
Or is that something you could still put in your lease?
Well, that's, yeah, that's kind of really, and he hasn't seen this, obviously, and I kind of, my fear is that if he does see that, he'll say, well, I don't want to do this now, and I really want that driveway in there, so I would like this, you know, we could say.
So it's easier if we force it than if you force it?
Absolutely, thank you.
We need to put whatever dates you want.
That's maybe the bad guy, huh?
Try to give me here.
A summer to get through stuff.
I understand the weather, winters come and they don't want to do the concrete, so I would, the biggest driveway is in, and it's very, did a fantastic job with that, so I know he's doing good work, but I'm afraid that if we don't do it, the customers will go around the building like they say, pull onto the street and drag the mud and the dirt on the street, and I don't want to block the driveway because then you got to maneuver in the parking lot to get out.
So I. It's not, you're at, November.
Staff have a recommendation on what would be a fair timeframe?
A date, yeah.
How soon do you want it? Do you want it like July first or May first?
Frost comes by usually by June first.
June first? Don't all work done by June first?
Well, I guess my question is, if we're dragging a bunch of dirt on the road, am I going to get, am I going to be in violation because people are dragging dirt on the road? There's a driveway there, I can't.
Well, it's a private road, so you're, you're going to be, sooner, the sooner you can get it done, the better, but.
And I think he will, I think he, I really think the guy's going to do it, but I just would like to have a little bit more muscle.
What, what date would you like?
Oh, well, how long, I'm from Florida, so I don't know how long you can pour concrete, so.
Little of November, you're done.
Yeah.
Okay, so like we give him two months if we said like November 31st, is that?
Suppose it's matter how soon you sign your lease with him then, I'm sure.
Yeah, I mean, he wants me to sign, I want to sign the lease when we went past the appeal process, because I'd like to get open like October 5th, so if we could.
Well, if we say December 1st, it's a little late. It's not late, it seems pretty early.
Middle of November.
Middle of November. More realistic.
We'd put in there November 15th or 16th?
That would, that would be good.
That would be good.
If we could do that, of 2016.
Say December 1st.
That's fine, that's a better number.
The weather will dictate.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
That it has to be done before that regardless.
This is South Dakota.
December 1st would be great.
Right. Okay, so we clarified the tractors out front, and now we're talking about moving this up to December 1st, and that would be the only additional potential changes we'd make, but we don't have to change the tractor thing.
No.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no one here to oppose this item, so we need a motion, and with some additions the way it sounded, or modification. You got those dates figured out, Doug?
I'm slow.
Make a motion to approve it under the conditions Doug's got.
December 1st, that's the only.
December 1st, yeah.
And Scott, if there were an issue due to weather or whatever, he could always, in good faith, bring it forward, right?
Yeah.
He'd work with the office of the county, yeah. We're just getting the initial deadline.
So with that, with that adjustment, I would make a motion to approve.
December 31st deadline on, okay, we have a second right there, and a motion, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries, so reports, new and old business.
The only thing, David handed out the, the meeting for the self-service planners you're invited to, the only other thing is I have asked Mr. Chairman to contact Bill even, he did, Bill said he'd be submitting me a letter and never has.
He hasn't given.
So I don't know what you want to do.
Motion to declare that seat empty.
But.
Can we do that? I mean, I think in good faith, he wants to get off of here.
He indicated he was going, he can't serve anymore, and he, but.
Basically said that.
I haven't gotten anything in from him writing.
I think that, let's move forward. I don't think we're stepping on anybody's toes, so do we need a motion and action by this committee?
Maybe you could just accept his resignation.
I accept his, we accept his resignation.
Yes, because he indicated that he would be done.
Yep. So then we can have a vacancy, we can get it filled and we can be back at.
We have two, Bonnie?
Bonnie, are you going to stay?
What?
Bonnie and I talked, in terms of, end of December, and she's eligible to be reappointed, and so there would, what we'll do is we will go to the County Commission, she'll have to reapply like who was last, last year, if she'll be reapplying, or maybe even, I can't remember, but you can reapply.
Yes.
And then it would be up to the County Commission to fill the two vacancies, but one, there's one to be filled, well, there's two to be filled, and if Bonnie so chooses, her name can be put into consideration.
I know of a couple applicants, but Bonnie, I think, you know, we would be silly to lose your experience.
And she shows up.
Unlike Del Rapids.
And your knowledge of Split Rock Township.
And Spook Road.
We seem to lean on that quite a bit.
Yes, we need.
Well, it's always good to have people, I mean.
Township clerks, former township clerks on board and everything else, it's always good.
Yeah, so, but we did have a little discussion about sort of the process, and then what we will do is, I worked with the Commission Office, Robert, and we put out a press release sometime, typically the end of October, first of November, thereabouts, we open, leave it open for about a week, I mean, sorry, a month, so then we close it in December and try to get someone appointed sometime end of December, first part of January, so we have someone in the meeting in January.
And actually, people can put in for these positions all the time, it's just that we don't have openings.
You can be on the parks board, you can be on museum board.
But I prefer to fill both of them at once.
Of course.
Because, because I know that we'd accepted his resignation, but really I have two meetings left, so.
We had a motion to accept his resignation, do we have a second? Yep. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. All those.
It was Paul that kicked you.
Yeah, yeah. I could see nobody else wanted that responsibility, so.
You're going to get crossfired at the Pork House.
Yeah.
He's a government guy, he'll understand.
Yes. Yes.
He'd be all right with that.
I, I vote aye, by the way, just in case. All the favorites signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
I don't have anything else.
Okay, good. All right.